Good afternoon, every one. I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, November the 13th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the Russell County Government Center. I'd like to start first with a call of order and roll call. Tim Lovelace.
Here.
Carl Ray.
Here.
David Eaton.
Here.
Steve Breeding.
Here.
Rebecca Di.
Here.
Horace Christian.
Present.
And Lou Ann Wallace.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a call.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'm going to ask for the invocation. Please rise and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, forgive us for where we fail you each and every day, and Father, thank you for all the veterans across this great country that sacrificed their lives for us, especially this week, Father, as we just celebrated Veterans Day. Forgive us for where we fail you. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of our local government, Father. For it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say this tonight. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors. We appreciate your coming. Those that have signs, I appreciate your signs, but if you're on the front row, please be cognizant of the people behind you so that you don't block their view, and we appreciate that. So I can see your signs, and I see those in the back, and we all do. So thank you for that, but just remember, there's people sitting behind you that may need to see and would like to see and not be blocked. Another thing I want to say is I'm going to welcome our attorney tonight to the meeting, and this is Nick Compton. Ms. Katie is out with COVID, so prayers for Ms. Katie, please, and we'll have Nick here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Compton, for being here and representing us well. Now, moving along, I need an approval of the agenda, and I believe we have an amendment. Who's got that? Okay.
Madam Chair, on, under the county administrator's request, on line item number seven for the Russell County PSA Virginia Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund on Natchez Ford and Clinch Mountain Road project, I'm requesting the board to table it for one more meeting, too, so we can get an increase in grant on that project. And in its place, over the weekend, due to the amount of fires that are occurring in the region and the county, we have implemented a burn ban, Declaration of Emergency Management on a burn ban.
Okay, thank you very much. So with those amendments, please, I'll ask for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Say it.
I got two. I'll take either one. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we have on our agenda a presentation, and this is Ms. Martin for Vet Fest, Southwest Virginia. Doro, are you in the house?
Stacy.
Stacy? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, and I apologize, Stacy. Please forgive me.
No, no need. You just got to settle for me, that's all. I want to thank the board and, you know, for the county's support in Vet Fest and the entire series of events. We were able to host events, you know, the Veterans Breakfast over at Fairgrounds. We did, we were able to do a car show, motorcycle ride, Vet Fest itself here in the town park. I'm happy to report that we've had the biggest success we've ever had this year. The attendance more than tripled the previous two years combined. So we look forward to continuing to work with the county and the town on that. We've even got a couple more events we want to throw in that should really tie in well with the county's ecotourism business. Look forward to presenting those ideas in the coming months. But for this evening, we wanted to say thank you for the donation and the assistance. We had these flags done up, and they flew at every one of the events because we wanted everybody to come to know if the town supported or the county supported, and they did fly at all those events. We wanted to present that to the board tonight, along with a thank you card from Doral. That's the, she thinks of those, those things, I don't. But I wanted to say again, thank you for your support. It's greatly appreciated. Who should I hand these to?
That's lovely. Mr. Lester.
Yes, sir. I'd be good as a veteran. Thank you.
Who is a veteran. Thank you. That's extra lovely. We appreciate that so much. Moving along to new business, I'm going to need approval of the minutes from the October the 2nd, 2023.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we're moving along to line item number two, approval of expenditures. I need a motion to, to. Good lord. Approve the expenditures. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Say it.
Thank you, David and Mr. Breeding. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're coming to line item number three, committee appointments for board considerations. First, we have the Dank Community Center Board. I would like to do that as a slate, if we may, and next, we have the Russell County Planning Commission and the Cumberland Plateau. So starting with the Dank Community Center Board, and I think I can do this as a slate, right? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to put Kathryn Pratt and Jason Gullett back on the Dank Community Center Board.
I'll make it motion.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Say it.
I have two seconds. Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we're moving on to the Russell County Planning Commission for a four-year term.
And that's my district, and I would like to put Mr. Greg Stoots down here.
Okay, we have a motion for Greg Stoots.
I'll second it.
Which is out of District Six. Thank you, Mr. Eaton. We have a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Commission. These are one-year terms. Citizens usually sit here. We have James Eaton Jr. I'll entertain a motion for someone or him.
I'll make that motion to nominate Jim.
Okay, thank you very much. I need a second.
Second.
I got a second for Mr. Eaton. All in favor?
I'll need to abstain. He's my first candidate.
Steve that made the motion. Second. Steve seconded it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so all in favor? Let's do it again. Okay. And Mr. Eaton is abstaining. Let the record show that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Citizens' comment period. We're coming to that, and I have several on the list. We have a three-minute limit, so I'm going to call for, the first one on my list is Amy Branson. Ms. Branson, give me your name, address, and what you're here for.
Amy Branson. My address is 224 Davis Memorial Drive, Castlewood, Virginia, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the Moss Three dump site. I want to ask the Board of Supervisors why they can't tell us anything about the project and why it's been such a secret up to this point. Where in law or regulations does it say that the Board of Supervisors cannot discuss this with the residents of Russell County? Has there been some kind of signed NDA with a private party? Wouldn't that be a conflict of interest, given their elected positions? Everyone seems scared to talk. Is this private entity threatening our elected officials personally or the county with a lawsuit? If elected officials are being threatened personally with legal action, maybe they should consider stepping down so we can elect officials who won't be bullied into doing political favors for the wealthy people, especially those when it's against the will of the people and citizens. Would it be easier for the county to fight a lawsuit against the county that stops the landfill or to spend millions of dollars to reclaim this landfill when it fails, like our neighbor in Bristol? Have any of you been to Bristol or looked at their most recent monitoring reports, which are posted monthly? Even after they've stopped taking trash, the temperatures within their landfill are still too high, and they're still off-gassing excessive benzene levels. What is our health in Russell County worth? While the board has not answered many questions, we hope that the board will foster a more open dialogue with its citizens in the future for the betterment of Russell County and its citizens. Thank you.
Next, I have Stanley King. Keen, sorry.
Yes, ma'am. I will, I will start out by saying I hate the area of the landfill discussion, but my issue is with road safety, the Lynn Spring area, Route 632, and I have got some good hopes in getting something done this time with Mr. Eaton and Mr. Lester. They both are doing, are doing good on it for me so far, but I've been here in the past with issues on that road, and I was in hopes I'd see someone from V-Doc tonight. This last wreck we had, I'm going to need more than three minutes because a life and death situation should deserve more than a three-minute deal, but I had, there's been eight wrecks at my house. I've lived there 50 years. We have a speeder problem up there, and we've had two fatalities. We had a fatality a couple weeks ago with an Austin powder truck. That seemed to go swept under the rug for some reason because it wasn't in the Lebanon paper, it wasn't on the Richlands Radio News, nor any TV news that we see. That's beside the point. I'm standing here on behalf of the safety of that road up there and the, and the safety of my home and my family. I'd hate to have a big truck come through my house, through my bedroom, and, and I ask each and every one of you that can to put a word in edgewise, and let's try to get something done on this. We have no law up there. Zero. Big zero. No law. You can't get them up there. But the morning, an Austin truck went in the creek inside of my house and killed this 21-year-old man. The road was full of state troopers, but you waste your breath trying to get any, any law up there. The issue in the past on that, without road signs or speed limits set, then they couldn't do anything about speeders. But it's just not the, the traffic of the people that live up there. We have a lot of commercial traffic over in the page at the mine site, and I'm here to tell you, some of them people at Buck One, they think they're on the Daytona 500, and it's ridiculous. And it's, we, we can't get, we can't get nothing, I've even offered them radar and my driveway, anything to slow people down and to help. And, and it, it really needs addressed, and I'm hoping this speed study that you all are putting in for is going to be the answer to it. I have spoke with Morphyles Office and several others, and I'm reaching out to everybody that I know that might can help to try to do something about this system.
Thank you, Mr. King.
I appreciate everybody's time, and I appreciate anything you'll do to help.
You made it right into three minutes. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Burgess.
Josh Burgess, 1857 Arch Road, Cleveland, Virginia. Came here tonight, not to speak to y'all, hopefully get educated, but I saw the paper out there, I said, what the heck? Anyways, I'm opposed to this landfill. I'm really come to as a concerned citizen, but that's not true. I'm actually terrified of anybody's studied landfills and effect and what it does to community, property value. You know, you could say right here today, if I wanted to resell my house, the property value has already dropped. Would I keep it a secret that there's a potential landfill coming? You know, I, I can't do that, so. That and the amount of truck traffic that, that can be associated with a landfill and the amount of acreage that the landfill is going to spread across, potential landfill, nobody's educated. I hate that it's come to us like this. I imagine if a community was going to take on a project like a landfill, it would come through a newspaper as a warning to prepare the citizens for what they might be up against. But you got 5,000-plus acres, I hear, the largest landfill in the world, it's 2,200 acres, so you're looking at times two as a potential landfill, maybe broken up into sales. There's a lot of different ways to do it. But we sit on one of the most protected areas of the Clinch River, and the watershed on this thing is enormous, and the history of mining in the area is unknown. It dates back so far. In reality, we're sitting on under, there's underground lakes in the area, and anybody who's lived in the Clinch field, Cleveland, Back Valley area, has known somebody that has lost a well in the past due to mining. So the hazard, the potential for the hazard and the, just the community needs to come together and do whatever it takes to put a stop to this thing. I'm terrified, and I'm invested in the community, and I plan on continuing to invest in the community. This is the last way I imagine myself approaching this board. I thought it would be on different terms. I know very few of y'all, and just, I watch you on YouTube, just to let you know. Your word does get out and let y'all go, go across. I'm one of the few. I know the views are very low, and I was shocked at the size of this room, considering the population of the county, which tells you that most of the county is not involved in what y'all do, just to the amount of seating that y'all have here. But I'm opposed to the landfill, and I know there's a lot of people that's opposed to it. I haven't run across a single person that is for it. Zero. That's all the time it will take. Thank y'all.
Thank you. We appreciate your voice. Next on the list is Billy Johnson.
I live at 5772 Cleveland Road. I'm against landfill. The health of it, it's not going to come out. Like Josh said, the traffic, there's underground caves. I mean, there's still coal in there, so what if one of them catches on fire? You know? What's going to happen? It's going to spray it everywhere. You're not, you can't put a fire out that's underground. I mean, it can't happen. You know, I run for the rescue squad, and we don't want to see that. You know, the fire department don't want to see it. None of us. So I'm asking y'all, vote no on it. I mean, look at the citizens. You know, they're, they don't want it. And I mean, that's all I've got to say. It's up to y'all. We got to shut it down. So.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next, I have Gary Hughes.
Gary Hughes, 175 Community Church Road, Swords Creek, Virginia. All I want to talk about is the landfill, but I want to talk about the history of this region. When man came here, white man came here, they saw huge trees, they saw the opportunity to make big money, so they cut, saw mills came, cut the trees, and left. Then, rich people came in here and bought the coal rights from these poor people for nearly nothing. And so I think every time we turn around, all they want to do is just poop on this part of their country. The gas well, the state legislature allowed the gas companies to come in here and drill for gas. It's all about rich people making more money, and I don't want to be a part of a landfill that my future generations are going to have to deal with because we made a mistake today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elijah Cordle.
Hello. My name is Elijah Cordle, and I live at 571 Call Valley Road in Swords Creek, Virginia. Members of the board, I'm here today on behalf of myself, as well as the other citizens of Russell County, to ask you to vote no and stop all consideration for a privately-owned landfill or otherwise. The evidence of what a landfill can do to a community and their health is self-evident. All you have to do is look at Bristol, the endless testimonials on social media, as well as in the newspaper, and there are study after study about them, and none of them report any good impacts for a community. We know the jobs they create are limited, and the economic promises they bring are empty. They can easily pay any fine and continue to operate with impunity. They cannot generate enough tax revenue to offset the cost of their business. The only person who can possibly profit and the owner is the owner of the landfill. So how much is the future worth to you? Is it worth the lives and health of the community, our family or friends? Is it the worst, is it worth the cost of new business ever wanted to open here? The answer is no. There can be no price on something so precious because these things mean everything to us. It's our future, and I ask that you think sincerely about what it means to be an elected leader and what the right thing to do is for the citizens of Russell County as you make your decision about the landfill, so please vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Cordle. Angie McLaughlin.
Hi, I'm Angie McLaughlin. I live at 7202 Finney Road in Honeaker. I'm here to talk about the landfill, and I was wondering if any of you could give us any reason why this landfill would be beneficial to the people of Russell County? If there's anything good about it, please let us know so that we can consider what might be good also. And if you can't discuss anything about the landfill, can you at least tell us why it's a secret? Why it can't be discussed? I've contacted the EPA, the DEQ, and several elected officials. No permits have been requested for this project, much, much less approved, so there's no way it can be considered already in progress. Why then can it not be stopped by an ordinance banning any private landfills from locating and operating in Russell County? This is how family clinic clinics were stopped when there wasn't even a danger of one coming in. Was that just a show that's not worth the paper it's written on? Almost all of your constituents are against this landfill. It's a completely bipartisan issue. No one in the county wants it. I'm totally against a private landfill locating anywhere in Russell County. I'll do everything in my power to stop it, and I'm asking you to do the same. And if anyone would like to sign the petition against the landfill, I have forms out on the table, and feel free to take copies to your friends and neighbors to let them sign. And also, I would like to request again that the public comments section of the meetings be changed to allow communication between the citizens and their supervisors. I probably request that every time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Next on the list is Jared Ring.
Good evening. I'm Jared Ring of 149 Calvary Baptist Road in Castlewood. I'd just like to say congratulations to those of you that kept your seats through the recent election. I've got 12 points against the landfill. I'd like to try to condense into three minutes. The first of which is the runoff risk, which several people have already talked about a little bit. There are pre-law features all over that territory that can only be scouted by drone. A pre-law feature being a mine feature that predates the latter half of the century when Congress actually legislated. And really, the only way you can determine where these pre-law features are is to scout them with drones, but the area is also covered in Japanese knotweed and kudzu, so it is nigh impossible to observe all the features that could be dumping down into a deep mine that we don't even knows there. And this whole part of the state is covered in what's called karsttopography, meaning we have caves all over the place, many of which feed into underground streams, and there's a real concern of overland and underground runoff and seepage from the landfill. Landfills also leak. That's not a matter of opinion. You can Google any amount of peer-reviewed statistics on the environmental effects of landfills. They leak. It, it is nearly 100%. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. So water pollution cannot be understated, and a significant number of people in this county are still on well water, which segues into my next point, which is the health risks. Again, cursory Google search, you can find reputable statistics on the amount of people that are affected and the ways in which they're affected, which are quite horrendous, by the way, living in vicinity to a landfill. That can't be understated, and typically, these health, health risks disproportionately affect people like seniors and the extremely young, and Russell County frankly is a county of seniors. Most of our working age people have moved off over the years. So this will disproportionately affect the old, who already have health complications, and the young, who are the future of this county, more so than everyone. I'd also like to bring up the point that this could alienate long-term employers in the county. AEP has had the power plant at Carbo for longer than I've been alive, and the creek that runs by Moss Three is a, right there at their power plant. If there's any amount of trash that ends up in that creek, it's going to end up being AEP's problem to a degree. There's also no way they're going to appreciate when their corporate heads come down there having the smell of a landfill a quarter mile away and upwind. So this is going to alienate an employer that is already here, that has been providing jobs in this county for half a century. It could also alienate potential employers because I think the image of being a county that is open for dumping is so damaging. It can't be understated because who wants to move a business into a county that just got a massive landfill, especially with the bad PR that Bristol just got?
Mr. Ring, our timer went off, so I'll let you wrap it up if you can quickly.
Well, I got four out of 12.
I know.
I'll be back.
Next month. Thank you. I apologize. All right, that wraps it up. So before we end public expression or public comments, is there anyone that did not get a chance to sign up that would like to speak tonight on, on the subjects that you need to talk about to us? I'll recognize you. You want to come up and tell us your name, please?
Brown Music.
Address?
172 Alvey Creek Road. Russell County. I've lived here my whole life. Enjoy it. Great back in the 90s. Seemed like we had people that brought industries into this area. You had Teleflex, Lear, Alcoa, Mr. Brown. Why can't we bring stuff to work in Russell County? Ain't nobody done nothing to bring any industry into Russell County in years. All y'all can come up with is, is make it a dump. That don't bring no tax revenue to the. That don't bring no tax revenue to this county. That don't help the drug addiction in this county. You bring work to people of Russell County, it takes care of a lot of your problems. Work cuts out on the drug abuse, stealing, home invasions, everything. Bring us some work, don't bring us no landfill. Russell County can do anything. Coal industry was great. Coal miners was great. Russell County still got coal. Y'all don't want coal. If y'all want electric vehicles, help bring us a battery plant that done hit Moss 3. You've got water, you've got rail access, you've got people willing to work. What's a landfill gonna bring? Seven jobs. Bring us some jobs to Russell County. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Floor is open. You name an address, please.
My name is Doris Sayers. 6203 High Point Road. I worked up Moss 3 for over 20-some years, like where y'all wanting to put the landfill. It's sitting on refuge, and the refuge is 80% pure coal. They had it checked when they was building the power plant at St. Paul. I was there, I helped them check it. Had a big drainpipe been under that landfill. And it will eat too, and this water runs off that pond all the time, because I used to go with the federal man to check it. It would run a five gallon bucket with him two minutes, and it runs out into the creek and the Clinch River. So where you think his waste is going to come? However, it's going to go right into the river. It don't have to get down the mines, it's going to come through that refuge, because refuge ain't solid. It works, it moves around, and if it catches on fire, it burns for years. And then you got all that trash it burns through. So I just wanted to tell you all that, because it's a...
Are you the gentleman's house? That's great.
Yeah. And ever who dressed that up down there at the bottom, put the dirt in, reviled that off, in Russell County, they did cover up a graveyard. They are a graveyard right there. It's right below the road out. I walked through it many a days. I worked up there since 79. Hit between the dry side and the road out. Some of the tomb marks is 1800, 1900s. And ever who done the doors and work up, don't know who done it, but the refuge, it's bad, it does work, because I helped fill that pond in some, and you push the road out there and you go back, and it wouldn't road die, it would ride out with you. So it ain't stable. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers. Anybody else before we close? Public comments?
Hello, my name is Christina Coghill, and I am a Russell County native that also lived in Bristol for 20 years. I have firsthand seen the repercussions of the detrimental health problems it causes. Also, Russell County is a viable economic industry if you focus it on the right places. We have that beautiful river that has, I think, 23 protected species of mussels, federally protected mussels. It has 19 protected fish. We can make this county wonderful if we focus on the things that already are wonderful, and trash is not the answer. The answer is viable recreation for families and bringing families back to Russell County. Thank you.
Could I get your address, please?
Fletcher Job, Castlewood. 140 Fletcher Job, Castlewood, Virginia.
I'm going to recognize her first. Are you coming? Do you mind? Sorry.
Sheila Ball.
Thank you.
1247 Eagles Nest Road, Castlewood. I live within a mile of this proposed mess. I have my dad, generation one, generation two, my daughter, generation three, three of my grandkids, generation four. This will be a mess. It will be a mess. I have my grandchildren here, because I don't want this, and I don't want the health issues. My granddaughter is fighting asthma today. Who knows how much more this is going to do to us? My dad's fought cancer. I've had cancer. My mom has had cancer. Leachate is some bad stuff, and other stuff, you know, is just not good for anyone here in Russell County. Why can't this go somewhere to some desert somewhere where no one lives, where no one can live anyway? Please don't put this on us. I don't usually talk, but this upsets me so bad for my family, their children. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sheila. Name an address, please.
310 Shotgun Hall of Cleveland. I just wanted to let you know the experience I had. Me and my wife took the grandbabies down to the lake one day, and the smell from Bristol trash now was so bad, we couldn't even enjoy the day there. So I'm telling y'all, I know y'all probably live here, but this stuff is going to come up here and settle over this town, and it's going to run this town, not only the towns around. I mean, you really need to think about this. This stuff's going to be like a cloud. We couldn't even sit down there and enjoy the day with our grandbaby. And it's going to be bad. And I mean, this was on a real nice day down there, how it settled, and we was like 35, 40 miles from Bristol on Houston Lake. So I mean, you really need to think this over, because it's going to come up this mountain like a funnel, and it's going to settle right here on this town alone. And I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for speaking. Anybody else? Anybody out there that I can't see? Name an address, please.
I'm Patricia Lester. I live at 39 Riverside Ian Drive, Lebanon, Virginia. I'm a single mother, and we just recently bought a house down in Cardington Place, and it's just a couple miles away from the proposed landfill. I am against it, and my children are too. My oldest has a 4.0 at the moment at school. She's a senior, and she wrote some key points she want me to speak about, if you don't mind, please. The landfill will cause many health problems, which can affect our children, grandchildren, family and friends, she said. Bristol landfill has caused many problems. Residents have said they can, residents, I'm sorry, can say that they can smell a landfill from their houses. Won't this affect our clean air also? The trash could work its way down into the Clinch River, is her next point, like some of the other citizens have spoke about, and we are concerned about that, because we're big environmentalists, we're big conservationists, where we live, you know, close to the river already. It's in our backyard almost, you could say. Many people who live towards the Clinch River, they use it as well water. We have our own well down in Cardington, and there are a lot of elderly that live down there too. So I'm always trying to speak for them, but I also want to speak for elderly, and I have quotes to some of my neighbors, they are against the landfill also. So please to consider, you know, something like this goes in and it gets in our water, I'm afraid it's going to wipe us all out, especially them, you know? Also, we live on a protected wildlife reserve in Cardington that uses the Clinch River. The pollution from the landfill might kill our wildlife. There are hundreds of acres down there that are, it's a wildlife preserve, so we want to look out for our wildlife too, she says. Also, protected freshwater mussels that are in the river that would probably die from the pollution, and that will be the end of all that. She doesn't want to see that happen. Also, there are a bunch of new signs that help people find the boat ramp. Won't that go against the reason recreation Russell County is trying to promote? We got some new signs down in Cardington, leading people down to where the river is. And she's saying, doesn't this go against what we all believe in? We need to keep the Clinch clean, we need to keep it clear, we need to keep it open for not just ourselves, for our future generations. Thank you for considering this. Thank you. So like I said, please do vote against it. Appreciate y'all so much. Thank you for your time.
We appreciate your voice. Thank you. Anybody else? Name an address, please.
I'm extending my hand. I live at 188 Sykes Drive. I've hauled trash off Long Island to Pennsylvania. Trust me, you don't want it in this county. You don't want it here. I've hauled it.
We're still open for comments.
Kerry McCormick, 630 Archip Road, Cleveland, Virginia. You know, the biggest thing for me is that this is a biodiversity hotspot, and it's ranked up there nationally, like the top 10 with the redwood forests here in Nevada Mountains, the Everglades, and, you know, to some of these other folks' points today, you know, pouring resources into that type of tourist industry and promoting biodiversity. And, you know, I understand too, when I look on the web, the mussel population is down and a lot of other, you know, issues are happening, but like when you look at the Everglades or the redwood forest, and like, hey, we only have 4% of our trees left, they don't say, hey, let's just come down, call it a wash, right? It's like they doubled down their efforts to protect their biodiversity, and I just feel like it's such a huge overlooked thing in this project specifically. And again, like, we'd like to see an environmental survey, and like, hey, you know, the karst topography that they're talking about is real and it's very complex, you know, and like, how will that affect the water systems? Does it go up to Hornaker? Does it go down to Levni? You know, we know St. Paul's on the Clinch River, and, you know, it's a real thing that needs to be discussed in the open, so that's about it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Donna Fields. 140 Road, Fletcher Drive, Castlewood, Virginia. As my daughter spoke a while ago about the protected mussels in the river, they are federally protected, and not to mention the major conserves that has worked so hard producing vine properties to protect our wetlands, the waterways, keeping cattle out of the river, you know, keeping the animals out of the river, you know, things like that. I don't see how that's any different than what we would be keeping industrial trash out of our waterways. I have been on the Clinch River all my life. I'm 59 years old. I raised my daughters on the Clinch River. I mean, it was just our recreation. We go camping, you know, swimming. It was just something we did regular, and they loved it, and my two little grandsons love it now, and they're only four and six years old, and I would hate to see that run for them. They deserve to have good, clean water in our county, and we all deserve it. We worked hard to fight since the acid spill at Carbo Plant. I mean, it was awful, and the river is, just a few years ago, was recovering from that. And we don't need to add to it. I just hope, pray that it doesn't come to our area. That's all I got to say.
Very good. Thank you so much for coming. Nobody? Mr. Hughes, you're out of order. I'm sorry. Mr. Hughes, you're out of order. Name an address, please.
Curtis Sayers from 360 Carbo Road. Just purchased a house about five years ago, within a quarter of a mile of this proposed site. Never dreamed anything like this would happen. Couple years ago, word was circulating that the county was going to put an industrial park in there, and then this comes out. It don't take no rocket scientist to know what this is going to do to the community over there. Maybe you all don't live close to it, but if it was in your backyard, you wouldn't want it either. And my daughter's 22 years old, just getting into a teaching career, and she don't need this. We are on the well water because the county didn't put water by her house and a quarter of a mile. And the people, the people vote no, and I expect you all to vote no.
Thank you so much. All right. I don't want to cut you off, but...
My name is Tammy Garrett. I didn't intend to, I live at 336 Russell Street here in Lebanon. Didn't intend to speak tonight. I was going to wait until I had some things prepared, but everyone that has spoken has moved me so much that I feel compelled to speak to you all. I think everyone's been very emotional. They made some emotional statements about how this is going to, could impact them and their families and future generations, and I think all that is true and valid, and we need to recognize that. But I think that more than that, we need to look at the scientific impacts that this proposed private landfill could have. Just look at the research. I've looked at it just a little bit. You know, it doesn't take much to research it and find out that basically there are no good environmental or health impacts from the landfill. Just from what little that I have read, the liners do eventually, that contains the leachate, which is basically acid, does fail, sometimes within 20 years. So that's within our lifetimes. So if we think that a liner is going to contain it and hold it all in, it will for a short period of time, but not for a long period of time. And if this is a private landfill, we don't know how we can hold them accountable when accidents happen. How can we hold them accountable if we have leachate, if we have accidents? If you Google "five major manmade disasters," on the list, you are going to find toxic and chemical waste accidents from trucks, from trains. You're going to see that that is on the list. The things that we would be looking at is on the list of most common manmade environmental disasters. So there's a lot that we really need to look at. Also, we are looking at an environment over there that we know is already fragile. It's already compromised. It's compromised from years of coal mining, and that's why it's been protected. It's, you know, that's why the Clinch River has protected species. That's why we've worked so hard to reclaim that land and that environment over there because it's already... because it's already been, um, abused and compromised by years of coal mining. So it's already a fragile ecosystem there. And I think that everybody here that has spoken before has talked about that. And they, that is what they're trying to get across. But what I want to stress is everything that they said with such emotion actually has, um, scientific and proven, um, backed up results from, from what happens when a place has a landfill.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Jim Little, 1660 Copper Ridge Road, Castlewood. The many speakers tonight, and I applaud their efforts here, have all spoken on health issues, environmental issues. So I'm not going to repeat the many things said by them. But what I do want to make the point of is our young people and coming back to this county. Here we are wanting to keep our young people here in the county. We want to have opportunities for them. We want them to be proud of our county. Now, I can, I have a daughter that, and I will preface, since she's a county employee, that I'm not speaking on her behalf. In fact, she would hit me on the head if she knew I probably was speaking. But she goes away to college, returns here with a passion for the environment, with passion for tourism. And that's what we want our young people to come back for whatever reason, whether it's in the medical field or diesel mechanics or whatever. But are they going to want to come back to a county with this type of contamination? With the stigma that gets attached to the county when you say, I'm from Russell County? Or I'm promoting Russell County? You're already behind the eight ball when you do that. Do we want to hang that anchor around our young peoples? We're having enough trouble keeping them here and having them come back. And we're certainly not helping yet with this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Anybody else?
Great.
I'm David Ball, 50 Ball Drive, Cleveland, Virginia. I just think the obvious consideration of a private landfill operation is that when it becomes too expensive to operate, they'll file bankruptcy and leave the mess they created for the government taxpayers to clean up. The only thing a private landfill does is guarantee that during the profit phase, all the benefits will flow up to the owners. And during the unprofitable phase, uh, such as a Bristol landfill, the company will be bankrupt and unable to meet its financial obligations. Whatever bonds exist will have to be split up, uh, you know, between all of its debtors, which if they're like me, they'll always be spinning on new credit lines. County might never see a single penny. Instead, the company, uh, if it can outspend its bonds, you know, with additional credit, it can fall back on the county to fix it. Once it shuts down, there's nobody to blame but ourselves for allowing it to happen. These exploits are kind of blatantly obvious if you really study it. Anytime you think you can contain it, there's probably another loophole that you haven't considered. There's no legal requirement that a company or enterprise, uh, ever be profitable for itself. For instance, it could only exist for the purpose of, you know, uh, the other companies on its balance sheet, the outflows. Even if you absolutely believe with all your heart that those who seek to establish a landfill are completely benign in what they're doing, there's nothing to prevent the owners of selling it to the highest bidder. A bidder who may, for instance, have a foreign interest against their own national security or lacking a genuine interest in our local environment here. If you think you can track down where the money flows, you know, good luck. Because it'll probably vanish along with the bonds and the investors and the promises and the environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comments still open. Anybody out there? All right. I'm going to close public comments. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your voice. We appreciate you. Okay, um, let me find my place here. Constitutional officers' reports and requests. Anyone here? I don't think so. Next, we have the county attorney, uh, reports and requests. Do we have anything from anybody down there? Mr. Compton? Okay. Thank you. County administrator, reports and requests. Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the county minister's, uh, reports is, of course, again, a reminder for the Virginia Association of Counties preliminary legislative program for 2024. This will be legislative issues that the board supervisors will have to address with our local legislators and the, uh, the new House and Senate. So that's, it's going to be a little difficult, but anyhow, I won't go into that one. Second thing on the county administrator reports is the Russell County Park Coordinates. We have implemented a new park. We've also, I mean, a campground. We've also implemented a new community center in the Swords Creek. Everything is looking good on both of them. So this needs to be reviewed and updated for these new facilities and, and, and operations. Number three on the county ministry reports is, again, is the Russell County School Energy Performance, the Clean Resource Capital Saves Credit Payment Agreement of $127,046.45. This was an agreement that the board of supervisors, along with the school board, implemented years ago to upgrade all the schools to, uh, for energy performance. And this is a break that comes back from the U.S. Treasury. They pay for 75% of the loan as long as we can be, keep meeting these requirements, energy saving requirements. So this year's allotment to the school board was $127,046.45. Number four on the county ministry reports is the VDOT October Report. As you can see on there, they have give you a schedule on, uh, the maintenance activities that have been completed on which routes. Um, and of course, the maintenance activities that are planned for each route. And, um, take a look at that and make sure that all the maintenance activities on your reports is up to date and just let us know. Now into the county administrator request is, of course, this is one that the board enjoys doing every year. It's that time of the year. This year went by very, very quickly. The Russell County Board of Supervisors, your annual holiday community turkey donation of 1,000 families will feed and to 222 employees. I need a motion and a movement to move on this.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Okay. We have several motions and several seconds. So, um, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Surely not. Motion carries.
Yes. And the way we feed this, the 1,000 families is through three pantries. And they all go through the Word of Victory and they'll garden. And then to Castlewood. Yes, that, these are, we use them as their venue and we feed 1,000 families. So next on the county ministry request is, um, uh, where we had to table the PSA. We're trying to get a better loan agreement. But we also had to implement a ban burn and a resolution on that. And what that does is we're restricting all, all open burns for right now because actually we have an active fire right now into the Mendota area that actually came over from Washington County over into Moccasin. So it keeps reigniting itself. We've had one in Big A. We've had one in Thenny. So luckily, we have not lost any lives or property yet, but other counties have. So we're trying to get in proactive. Washington County is implementing one tomorrow night. Buchanan County has already implemented theirs. Lee, Scott, Dixon, all the counties are trying to get a handle on this until we get some participation in rain to be able to slow this down. Anyone that's out there, you know, in the hunting or just out in your yard, you know how dry it completely is. So there is a no ban burning to further notice resolution that was put into place.
A no burn ban, Mr. Lester.
What does that say?
You had it reversed, but that's okay. We're understanding.
No burn.
So I'll, I'll, uh, ask for a motion.
I'll make it.
I have, I'll take several of those and I need a second.
I'll second it since Coral made the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for a burn ban.
We have no burn ban.
All in favor?
I don't want to call it. It should probably fire.
Any opposed?
No burn.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next on the county ministry reports is a, um, is actually the 2023 Authorized General Registry and Local Electoral Board Member Salaries for Russell County. This is a, um, this is the Authorized General Registry and Local Electoral Board Member Salaries Update for Russell County. This is all counties in the state of Virginia, done by the General Assembly and the Governor's Office with an effective 5% salary effective on July the first, 2023, an additional 2% effective December the first, 2023. I need a board approval on it for the appropriation for both the register and the board members.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I've got a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Next on the county administrator request is the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, the PSAP grant. This is a staff recognition grant of $30,000. This is for our dispatch office for 911. It was a recognition that was done through the Department of Emergency Management to our dispatchers that over this year in our, we have a 99.9% complete rate of answering and responding to calls. And this is a grant that was awarded to them and acknowledged them for $30,000. So I need an approval for this.
So moved.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? I think not on this. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, behind it, we also have the Virginia 911 Service Board, another grant. And behind it, which also pays for additional $5,000 for our new upcoming year of FY '24 data maintenance and data transfer grants of $5,000. So I needed approval for the, uh, data maintenance and transfer grant of $5,000 from the Virginia 911 Service Board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Next on the county ministry request or reports is, of course, the VDOT Speed Study on Lynn Springs Road for Route 632. As a resolution requesting that the Virginia Department of Transportation conduct a speed safe slash safety study along Virginia Secretary Route 632 Lynn Springs Road. A speed study along the Lynn Spring Road, Route 632, which will may assist in limiting motor vehicle accidents and improving the lawn safety along Lynn Springs Road. I need approval on that. So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. King, you have your study. We're going to send help.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county ministry reports and request is, of course, the Russell County Sanska Project Management Services Agreement. This is the amendment only to, uh, for the extension of the renovation portion of the courthouse, not the new portion, but this is the renovation. This is the continuation of the existing agreement. I need a motion and approval on it.
So move.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, this one I don't want to bring up, uh, is she sitting over there? Uh, Vicki Porter, she is retiring. So I had to grudgingly put this one on the agenda for her position for replacement, which is going to be very difficult to do. And I ain't going to say how many years she's been here because I will hear it tomorrow. So, um, I need an approval for, uh, uh, the Russell County Human Resource and Pavlov Position for approval for advertisement. I'll make that motion, but after we get a second, I'd like to say something.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Eaton.
I would personally like to thank Vicki, uh, for the hard work. And, uh, it's hard to work for an elected body, I'll tell you that. And to go through what you got to go through and do the job that she's been able to do, I am very grateful for what she's been able to do. And the trips to Richmond, her personality and her commitment for Russell County has been amazing. And I want to thank you personally.
I think we'll all ditto that. And so, um, with that, I'll entertain the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Yes, I'll be one. I'll oppose that.
Y'all should have all opposed.
I'm a no tonight, just because. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next is another grant. This is from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. And this is a planning grant that will go through the Cumberland Plateau Planning District for the downtown revitalization comprehensive community development plan for $60,000. I need approval and a motion on it. So moved.
Second. I'm a second.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate that. All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Next on the county ministry request and reports is, of course, from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. This is a litter, a litter prevention and recycling program of $25,440. Uh, this will be given out to, uh, Russell County, the town of Cleveland, the town of Honaker and the town of Lebanon. This is for $25,440. I need a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, uh, for the litter program grant. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county ministry reports and request is the National Opiate Settlement Payment. This is another payment that will, will be getting along throughout the years for $15,156.81. I need approval for $15,156.81.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, go ahead. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. Last one on the county ministry reports and requests is the, uh, professional services for the calendar year for the Russell County landfill. The current one that's closed on, on number 258, ground, Phase 2 groundwater monitoring and TRC approval of their contract. This is an annual requirement.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
I've got a second. That's good. Um, any further discussion?
I would like to have a little more discussion about that. Can you give us a little more information on it?
The, this is, uh, as all requirements under the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, all landfills have to be monitored, whether they're open or closed, and water quality, air quality, leachate. This is, uh, samples that we have to take on a monthly, quarterly, annual basis to give to the department quality on air quality control, water control, um, and adjacent properties. So it's, it's a requirement under the federal and state code from the Department of Quality. We contract these out through professional engineering services. They sample, sample and test and turn all these reports in and ensure that we meet all these benchmarks within the Department of Environmental Quality. It's done on an annual basis. We've done it for 28 years.
Okay. Got a, uh, any further discussion? Sorry about that.
That's a pretty expensive, uh, thing to...
The, yeah, on the report, I think the landfill, uh, the engineering services on this services, I think is what, $27,000, $28,000? Yes. Annually.
I think it varies like $2,500, $3,000 a month.
Yes, that's about, that's about the average.
Something along that.
Yes, that's about, that's about the average.
Yeah. Each time you do it, have a quarter monthly one?
Yes, it's, it annuals about between $25,000 and $30,000 a year. Depending upon how many rainfalls you have, we have to ensure this or how many events you have, we have to increase, you know, the, the monitoring and the well monitoring and the water monitoring, the air monitoring, and the gas monitoring. Our landfill has been closed, what is it? Was it 15 years now? Probably about 15 years. You still do that? Yes. Yes. Hmm?
So that would be a cost that we've got to do, that we would have to incur.
I'm going into question and answer.
Excuse me. Chairman's, chairman's prerogative here. No, no, no comments from the, from the audience. Okay, Mr. Lester, have you got everything explained?
Ma'am, that concludes the county administrator report to the press.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. We were in discussion. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? At this time, we're nearing the end of our board book. So we're going to be looking at board discussions and reminders. And then also in your packet, you have all your information back there for your PSA, your IDA. Please make sure your school and everything, please make sure you take a look at that. It's a pretty hefty board book this time. So board discussions, Mr. Lovelace?
Um, no, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to tell everybody on, thank, we're having a Thanksgiving dinner at the Cleveland Town Hall from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's provided by 128 DeCon. And y'all can come down and get you a Thanksgiving dinner that day and we will deliver. We will have meals also to be able to deliver to people if you want to. Yes, they are taking volunteers.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes, I've got a few things, Madam Chair. One, I want to give the citizens a little bit of detailed information. When I was on the Waste Management Authority, I was looking at ways to, we, we're required by the state to do recycling. So when I, and I want to clarify this because I know a lot of people have said that I'm the one that brought to the city or this, this industry, but I'm not. But what I was working on was a recycling project like they do in Surveival, Tennessee. You can look it up. It's called the Surveival Compost Site. And what we do and what the Waste Management Authority does is Dickinson, Bacchanal, and Russell, we haul the garbage down to the transfer station. Then we pick it up from there and we take it to Tennessee. And what I was looking at doing is taking 70% of that out and converting it into mulch. And if you look up their project development, it's a pretty amazing thing. And watching them and how they react to taking it, and then all you'd have was a lower percentage to take to Tennessee, so the cost would actually go down. So that's what I was working on. I wanted to clarify that for the citizens, it wasn't anything to do with a landfill. It was a recycling, large recycling project. So I just wanted you all to look it up. It's called the Surveival Compost Site in Tennessee, right in the heart of Surveival. Another thing I'd like to bring up is our Christmas parade in Honeakers, November the 18th, which is a pretty outstanding Christmas parade. Another thing I'd like to do is kind of give you an update. I want to thank the Sheriff's Office for providing the side sides. We had a Laurel Bay Lake Road project. We had the engineers come up there and we've been working on this for about eight years, trying to get a road up to Laurel Bay Lake on the Russell County side so you don't have to go all the way across Hyatt's Gap into Smith County to access the most beautiful 333 acre lake in Russell County. And that was a, an outstanding meeting. I think we've got some traction on bringing a lot of people into the area to be able to, what everybody's talked about tonight, to look at the beauty and, and of what we have in our region. Next thing I'd like to do is tell everybody, I want to thank my board. The Source Creek Community Center is up and running. We've got it scheduled and booked for a year. So, I mean, that's amazing. I want to thank this whole board for, for supporting that, that initiative. I think every area needs a community center. I really do. I think every area, district needs a community center. We went through COVID and haven't had a lot of people that's been able to get together and do things. And we've had bridal showers. We just had, done a fundraiser for a gentleman that was hurt terribly bad and they done a fundraiser, raised a lot of money to help his family that didn't have any medical insurance. So I just want to thank this board and thank everybody, Alonso, the county administrator, and everybody that's worked tirelessly and the workforce crew that's worked there, M.C. and Hurt Group. I don't want to leave anybody out, but just want to thank everybody. And also I want to thank our first responders. I think a lot of times we take fires and things like that for granted if, if it don't hit your area or if you don't catch your farm on fire, and I've had that happen. But we've got a lot of great rescue squad and fire department personnel and a lot of volunteers that work tirelessly to fight these things. And I just want to thank them and, and tell them how much I am grateful for their reaction to these fires working across boundaries and counties. And they, they've done an excellent job. So thank you. That's all I have. Uh, I'm, I'm sure they are, honey. I'm, I'm sure most of them. Have paid firefighters.
Mr. Breeding.
Yeah, I never know what I'm going to say until David gets through. He comes in front of me and he takes all the good stuff. Any rate, I want to, I want to talk a little bit about Laurel Bay. Like follow up on what David said. We went up there from the end of the state maintained road back in White subdivision up there. It's less than a mile and a half to the park, to the wildlife area is what it is, to the boundary up there. And we'd ridden it once before. It was a pretty rough four wheeler tract, especially right up near the top because there's a lot of cliffs up there. And after we came down, we rode that same route, we came back down. But after we came back down, our consultant rode a different route up through there with one of the property owners. There's two property owners we had to deal with other than A.D. But at any rate, the second route, I talked to him, I've talked to him a couple of times since then in relation to setting. And he said, I asked him about that secondary route and he said, it's a better route by far. Just eliminates a lot of that steep terrain up there. During the process of working on this, I hope in a couple of months, I'll have a look back on that. Certainly, hopefully in time, I'll talk to some legislative about possibly. So far, it's been pretty nice. It'd be just great ass. I can, from here, you could be at the market. I go back to Washington, Smith. One of the things we're talking about having our open house, December 4th, which is not our board meeting.
I also want to ask for a board shift down December 4th.
We probably need reschedule.
Right now, Christmas parade and.
Six.
But you're doing the courthouse, open house at 4 o'clock. Parade starts at six and it's on court night. So that would be a hard schedule.
I think we ought to, ought to try, I mean, try to work around the other, the other county parade. Do it on the 4th and 6th.
No six. So, um, the vehicle works really well for me.
It's a conflict. There's no way to correct it. Let's not do that. How about just move it to the next month?
Should that give everybody opportunity to go?
If this board is agreeable, I, I can have that by doing what you want. We're right there. You all stay there.
I'll make the motion. We're December, we're the December plan. Well, Christmas parade is that.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second to make sure that we're on board here on December 11th for our final coordination of 2023. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's all major.
Thank you, Chris.
No, not really. I think that's wild, honestly, but so I'll wait till reports and really do the comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Christian.
Yes, I would like to say I think, uh, for the four years I've thrown on this board, I got defeated in the last election, but I'm still getting it. Being a candidate and see what they, they would do, they do do. And the same has been raised many times that we've all got to get it. We've gone one down a bush, uh, building at the same hall. It is, I'm saving people, we're also in the process. So I don't want to make people think that we haven't done anything because this has been accomplished while I've been on this president board and I don't want credit to the board that's coming up. And I do appreciate what has been done through the months, the years, and I would like to show you the good circumstances of how the situation turned out. Next month will be my last meeting, I will return to meet time and time. I've attended those meetings ever since 1992. I don't know if anybody has a record, but I have. I didn't sit here like a wonderful people. I took notes of what was going on and things of that sort. So I am an active member and I want to contribute. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. We do appreciate you and your service. Also, I'm winding it down to Lou and Sophie's, so some of my phone, I like to see, I have to follow you now. So anyway, I'm just getting. Tape Industries, we are so pleased to have them in our community. They will be hiring at the beginning, 170 plus people. They are now hiring now. There is an editor on site already and they're working on their HR department and we're very pleased to have them. I will tell you that they look like they're a very nice community partner and they're not a fly by night. Actually, they did come in, got with associates all of us, so we did promise them and they came to a, a large building and they found it. So we're very blessed to be able to make that announcement. That's all we can do. Governor's done that and we're very pleased to have, have that in my district and our community. So, and next I want to say that we had a wonderful turnout for the ribbon cutting of the Dainte Coal Miners, uh, Miner's Heritage Trail, which is a nectar trail that will be managed by Sierra Trails. It's our first H2B trail. We're working on more, but this is the first step for us and so that connects Mountain and Dainte. And we also have a walking hiking trail that we hope that others will see fit to use it. And we want to expand that, that opportunity. In my district, um, the nature conservancy owns coal lands. There is noble coal lands in my neighborhood and in your neighborhood, problem. And so 153,000 acres belongs to nature conservancy and they have seen fit to put 10,000 acres in use for hunting and birding and that sort of thing. They've also done detective research around the community of Dainte, Virginia, about 15,000 acres. You will not be able to hunt fish or anything there. You can hike and bike and enjoy the neighborhood, but you can't shoot a gun there. But on the other lands, you are, you'll be able to hunt. So there's directional signs in that neighborhood down there. Department of Wildlife Resources is over this, is federal, federal folks. So you will expect to see conservation officers in my neighborhood and around your neighborhood because they're coming to a 20 year old pub. And so we're very pleased to say that we're moving forward in a lot of these initiatives that we have been waiting and waiting for a very long time. So the ribbon cutting was wonderful. The campground will be open just to sit and get our fee schedules. And I've got people waiting to get into that boutique campground. They're calling it, but anyway, we shall keep you all posted on that. Thank you all for coming December 11th. Um, well, sometimes, and they do like to be able to develop their own. They do like to develop, um, they do sometimes look for buildings. Some buildings suit their needs and some buildings do not suit their industry needs. You must remember, geographically, we're challenged here because we don't have a plant spot big enough to fall down an Amazon or something like that. So our, our geology or our geography hinders us from having a whole lot of large industries. Also, you talked about Carson Cave tonight. Someone, yeah, I can't remember who did that, Jerry? But anyway, yes, those are hindrances, particularly in district two. Sinkholes abound. So those have been some of the issues. We built a school at one time down there in the fairgrounds. Um, opportunity to do business in that neighborhood. So they own 160 acres, which we used to call golden. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
It's all those flat areas and somebody, all those flat areas. They tell me it's more like 200. Are you there?